To order and the Pledge of Allegiance will start with a roll call with stating the attendance. Can know which school committee members are on the call.
Who's it good on here? What is your password? No, no.
From home and good evening to the cabinet and school committee members. Happy Thursday. Today we will begin our meeting right at seven oh six. And we will begin with our Pledge of Allegiance. And so if the school committee members and all those on the call can unmute themselves and begin with their Pledge of Allegiance. A Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag.
Awesome. Go ahead and mute yourselves. Good evening. We will begin, I will turn it over to Ms. Sejas to do a roll call for our attendance today. And so Ms. Sejas, when you're ready, if we can do a roll call.
Roll call of the school committee members and attendants. Mr. Jimenez.
Present.
Ms. Carlisle.
You're muted, resume.
Ms. Carlisle.
I'm on something herself.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes, present.
Ms. Velez? Ms. Hernandez? Ms. Santiago?
Chair.
Ms. Alfaro? Mr. Wilson?
Present.
Six school committee members present with three absent.
Thank you, Ms. Sejas. We will begin with a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting on August twenty seventh. So I have a motion to accept the minutes from our last meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, moving right along. Ms. Veronica, do we have any public comments submitted?
I don't think she's on the call, but there are no public comments submitted.
Sorry, thank you, Ms. Sejas, for clarifying. Alrighty, I'll turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Beta, who will review our, sorry, enclosures for today.
Can you hear me? Just, okay. So for right now, we're going to go ahead and start with our student achievement indicators of success. And we are finally back on track with this. So I'm going to have our assistant superintendent, Sarah Kent, go over our student achievement indicators of success.
Ms. Kent, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'd like to just provide the Spanish translation number to those who would like translation. The number is one nine two nine two oh five six zero nine nine. Si ustedes quieren escuchar la reunión en español, por favor marque el número uno nueve dos nueve dos cero cinco seis cero nueve nueve. Gracias. Alright, Ms. Kent, back to you, thank you.
Good evening. I hope you all hear me fine. And I've tried to share my screen of the indicators of success for this month. You should have all received a copy of this today in email in case you wanted a hard copy, but I will share my screen to make it easier for you to follow. This meeting, believe it or not, I don't have the monthly indicators for you in that we haven't even been in school for a month. So I will catch up with those in November. But we do have a bunch of quarterly updates from last spring as well as some annual and the appendices for you. So to start, we're going to start actually on page four, sorry to make everybody a bit seasick here. Okay. On page four, you'll notice that we have indicator four, which is the final grades for students in grade four, exiting grade four and entering grade five. These grades here are actually based upon three quarters, not, you know, obviously fourth quarter was not included. You will see that they're seven to ten percent lower than final grades the year before. Also because their third quarter, generally fourth quarter kids make growth and improve. Moving to indicator five, which is parallel, but it's the eighth grade students. This again does not include quarter four. And you'll see that it's six to ten percent a bit lower than last year. A little bit more sixteen percent in science, again, without quarter four included in there. Indicator six is about AP courses, and this is an exciting one. You'll see that last year, even in the pandemic, taking the test online at home, we had fifty-four percent of our students who took the test get a three, four, or five, which shows an improvement of four percent from last year. You will notice that we had twenty-one less kids enrolled and we had about a hundred and seven less tests taken that had to do with the pandemic. But the ones who took it did pretty well. This year, we have two hundred and twenty-five kids already enrolled in AP courses. In indicator eight, don't have much to share with you, except the enrollment at CHS and COA is a total of fifteen hundred sixty-two kids. That is up sixty-one students from last year at this time. And overall, through March last year, our dropout rate was four point six six, which was a marked improvement from the year before. But again, that's as of March, not as of June. So if we had gone to June, we don't know how it would have quite ended. We do not have dropout rates from April to June because kids were not processed at that time as dropping out. But I will have information for you in November about how it's going to start this school year. Indicator nine is always a fun one to see what our students, a class of twenty twenty, decided to move to do once they graduated. So you will see that ten percent more than in the year before and actually ever, you know, as long as we've been tracking this, went straight into the workforce, which is not surprising given the economic climate right now. And we did have seven percent less enter a two-year or four-year college. The rest of the indicators, the military certificate programs, all stayed pretty stable. On indicator ten, sorry, staffing data, you will see that we had a significant reduction in teachers leaving CPS. We went from sixteen, sixteen percent down to about ten and a half. And that ten and a half was created by four point four point two who retired or were terminated and six point four who left on their own. So really, the reduction came in who left on their own. Promotions, we had four more promotions last year. And that's mostly due to the hard work that the HR department has been doing with our paraprofessional teacher pipeline. As you can see, we had a significant number of paras become teachers. And that's where the increase is from. And then in the appendix here for mobility. Now, remember, we've only been in school since September sixteenth. So this is not a full, full picture, but this does include everybody who came in or out so far. And you'll see that at the elementary and ELC, we've gained more than we've lost. But the middle school and the high school have both, both had a lot of kids come and go. But the net, the net of it has been lose, we've lost about thirty-five, thirty-four, thirty-five kids. So overall, you know, when you balance it all out, we've had thirty-nine more kids move out than in. And but more significantly, four hundred and thirteen kids have either come or gone. And then you compare that to where we were last year, it's a little bit less, believe it or not, than last year. We had about twenty-five less students moving in one direction or the other than last year. So our mobility rate for last year, based on March, basically, because with the stay-at-home order, students who moved out of the district were kept in the district until the end of the school year. Our mobility rate was down to sixteen point eight six, but again, that's as of the school closure. And then finally, the last piece of data is the final grades at the high school. You will see, again, this does not include quarter four. But the final grades that were given to the high schoolers were looking pretty good overall, the total percentages dropped. We had a lot, we had more kids failing one class, but in both ninth and tenth grade, a significant number of less kids failing three or four classes. So that's something that we're, we're glad about. And you'll notice that retention is for last year, we didn't retain due to the pandemic. So those are zeros. I would be happy to answer any questions anyone has. But it does feel good to report some data again, I gotta say.
I have a question.
Sure, Ms. Carlisle.
Yeah. How do you keep track of enrollment?
Right now?
Well, yeah, yeah.
Sure, so we're keeping track of enrollment through what is called our student information system, which is, we call X two or Aspen. It is where we enroll, the pick, the pick enrolls new students into that system. And then we also take attendance through that and do all those, you know, track kids.
Okay, so do we know how many kids we have on that are in the classroom right now, I mean, on?
Yep. Right now, enrolled, it's, I know it's here in a footnote, I'm sorry, but enrolled, we have six thousand two hundred and sixteen kids on our books.
Well, alright, now I see it, okay, I see it in a little footnote. Alright, so we have sixty-two, six thousand two hundred and sixteen kids who are enrolled and are learning right now on the, on.
That includes our ten schools, it also includes our out-of-district people. You'll, there is an enrollment report, I believe, that will be submitted, you know, in a few minutes, that will give you more detail.
Okay, thank you very much.
Question.
Go ahead, Mr. Jimenez.
I'm curious, and I know that you mentioned that the attendance, we'll go over it next, next. I'm actually, I'm just curious, like, in the, you know, few days we've had, how has attendance been?
So attendance has been really, really promising. We have been tracking, you know, tracking it throughout the district, but we have some really good hard data at the elementary and the high school. And it has been, I would say, you know, at the elementary, it's been between like ninety and ninety-five percent. And at the high school, also ninety to ninety percent, depending on the different grades. We are having, you know, it's different to track attendance virtually. And we're trying to figure out all those systems. And no, the state has also asked for some new information, whether the child was virtually present or physically present, or virtually absent or physically absent. So right now, everybody's virtual, but our systems need to be adjusted and we're working through that. But what, what I know you're asking and why you're asking, we're all wondering, is how are we doing compared to the spring? And we're doing really, really well. The message got out and people are taking it very seriously.
That's great, thank you so much.
Questions from the school committee?
I had a question about the, um, the learning centers in the, in the, in the schools, but I don't know if that's something that's going to be covered later, I'm happy to ask later.
Roberto, go, go ahead and ask because we're not, we don't have, we had a different presentation for tonight. So you, feel free to go ahead and ask now if it's relevant to the.
I'm not quite sure what the timeline was for starting to use those and if they have been started, if, you know, how are they going? Just kind of curious, like, what the status is and, yeah.
We can provide, so the goal is to start Monday at our schools. Most of our schools will start Monday. We had the high school do a soft start this week. And because they, they felt a real sense of urgency for, for some students. So that the goal is Monday, max fifty students because there's so many new protocols and things that we have to get used to. So that's, that's what we're shooting for. And so we're, we'll, we'll let you know, we'll do a report soon, once we get going, and we'll, we'll, we'll give you an update.
Oh, thank you so much, and, you know, I just, just want to say, like, it's, it's, I'm glad that we're able to offer this for students just because there's so many students who don't have the, you know, the spaces to, to, to do their work at home. And so, so I think, you know, it's, it's good that we are able to, to use the space, so thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. I also echo that appreciation for the team and, and those staff members who will be supporting students during this difficult time. Are there any other questions or comments? Alright, thank you, Ms. Kent. I will turn it back to our wonderful superintendent.
Now, let me go ahead and get the enclosures. But I would like to commend the personnel, a personnel update in the enrollment reports for the record. And I can, let me pull those up with the enclosures now. So it's all over minutes from what I was, from I read. So this is our personnel changes. And you, each of you should have received this in an email form. So you have all the, and this is from the beginning of the year, normally they're not this long. But what I would like to highlight, and our team has done an amazing job with this, the personnel report. Is, well, let's try to find the demographic data. So here's the demographic data. And I just wanted to highlight this because I think it's, it's helpful to know of the people that we have hired, here are percentages, and they are definitely, we have made an effort to really diversify our workforce. So you can see our demographic data with our Caucasians at fifty-two point nine percent, Hispanic thirty-one point four percent, black eleven point four, Asian Pacific Islander four point three. And then the next report are, is the student enrollment report, as Sarah was alluding to earlier. So here is our, our enrollment report for this year. Just note that we are, because we started school late, we, we feel like we're kind of two weeks behind reporting. And so the dust is still settling right now. And we're still, we're going over class sizes and reviews and stuff, but it should settle really soon. So here's where we're at right now. And so those are the two reports that I would like to commend for the record.
Awesome. Any other questions from the school committee before moving on?
Just wanted to say thank you for the hard work on the, um, the hiring. I know that the HR department has been doing a lot of great work on this. And it's good to see that, you know, that work pay off as we continue to, to do good work in diversifying our, our workforce. So thank you so much.
You're welcome, and thank you, HR.
Awesome. Moving right along to new business. Consideration and action, my apologies. Consideration and action to accept the remote learning technology essentials, system for student success and mass grad promising practices, federal grants for school year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one in the amount of up to three hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and sixty thousand, sorry, five hundred and sixty dollars. Explanation. The district has received funding from three federal grants that were not anticipated during budget adoption. The Remote Learning Technology Essentials Grant will be used to purchase iPads for pre-k kindergarten students. The Systems for Student Success and Mass Grad Grants will be used for staffing, benefits, professional development consultants, stipends, grant-specific school activities, supplies, materials, technology, and other costs associated with the grants. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter seventy-one, Section thirty-seven A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Ms. Sejas, may we get a roll call, please?
Consideration and action to accept the Remote Learning Technology Essentials System for Student Success and Mass Grad Promising Practices Federal Grants for a school year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one in the amount of up to three hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Sorry. One second, I'm sorry. Six votes in the affirmative with three absent, the motion carries.
Six in the affirmative, the motion carries. Next, we have consideration and action to accept Corona, the Coronavirus Relief Fund School Reopening Federal Grant for School Year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one in the amount of one million four hundred and eleven, four hundred and eleven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. The Corona explanation, the Coronavirus Relief Fund School Reopening Grants is providing the district with two hundred and twenty-five dollars per, per student to support the learning schools. The funds will be used to purchase laptops for teachers, classroom video equipment for forty-one classrooms, additional air purification equipment, replacement drinking fountains, and take-home physical education arts supplies for students. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter seventy-one, Section thirty-seven A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Ms. Sejas, may we have a roll call, please?
Consideration and action to accept the Coronavirus Relief Fund School Reopening Federal Grant for School Year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one in the amount of one million four hundred and eleven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez? Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative with three absent, the motion carries.
Six in the affirmative, the motion carries. Next, we have consideration and action to accept the safe and supportive, supporting students' behavioral, mental health and wellness and early college support state grants for school year twenty twenty, twenty, in the amount of up to a hundred and twenty-three thousand. District has received funding from three state grants that were not anticipated during budget adopt. The funds will be used for salaries and benefits, professional development, including stipends, conferences, and contracted services, tuition assistance, grant-specific school activities, supplies, materials, mentorship, subscription, technology, and other activities in support of the programs. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter seventy-one, Section thirty-seven A, provides for the acceptance of, you know, purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea Committee. Ms. Sejas, may we have a roll call, please?
Consideration and action to accept the safe and supportive school supporting students' behavioral and mental health and wellness and early college support state grants for school year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one in the amount of up to a hundred and twenty-three thousand two hundred dollars. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative with three absent, the motion carries.
Six in the affirmative, motion carries. Consideration and action to accept private grant funds from the Chelsea Education Foundation Butterfly Award and Reach Program and the Bar Foundation Chelsea Opportunity Academy for School Year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one in the amount of fifty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Explanation, the Chelsea Education Foundation has received additional funds for the Butterfly Award in memory of Caroline Aron, bringing the total received to fourteen thousand five hundred dollars as well as funds in support of the program. The district has received a third and final year of implementation funds for the Chelsea Opportunity Academy from the Bar Foundation. These private grant awards can be used for the cost of staff, professional development, grant-specific school activities, supplies, materials, and technology, and other activities in support of the programs. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter seventy-one, Section thirty-seven A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Ms. Sejas, may we have a roll call, please?
Consideration and action to accept a private grant funds from the Chelsea Found, Education Foundation Butterfly Award and Reach Program and the Bar Foundation Chelsea Opportunity Academy for School Year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one in the amount of fifty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative with three absent, the motion carries.
Six in the affirmative, motion carries. Next up, consideration and action to accept a gift of twelve thousand five hundred dollars from the Massachusetts Associate, Association of School Superintendents and Kiss One O Eight for Chromebooks for Kids. Explanation, Kiss One O Eight Radio Station and the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents have been partnering since late June in an effort to reduce the technology gap to choose its schools. They are donating twelve thousand five hundred dollars to the Chelsea Public Schools to help put a Chromebook in the hands of every child. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter seventy-one, Section thirty-seven A, provides for the acceptance of gifts only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Ms. Sejas, roll call, please?
Consideration and action to accept a gift of twelve thousand five hundred dollars from the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents and Kiss One O Eight for Chromebooks for Kids. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle? Ms. Carlisle, I think you're muted.
I said yes. It's not muted, is it?
Yeah.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative with three absent, the motion carries.
Six in the affirmative, motion carries. Next, we have consideration and action to accept a gift of five American Girl Dolls from Dr. Jerry Robinson at an estimated value of five hundred and fifty dollars. Explanation, this summer, Dr. Jerry Robinson, former president of the Children's Museum of Boston and current member of the School Committee for Boston Public Schools, donated twenty American Girl Dolls to the Chelsea Public Schools. She has since donated an additional five dolls at an estimated value of five hundred and fifty dollars. These dolls will be provided to some fifth and sixth. These dolls will be provided to some fifth and sixth grade girls in the Camino's Program at the Kelly Elementary School. Massachusetts General Laws Chapter Seventy One Thirty Seven Eight provides for the acceptance of girl of gifts only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Miss Hayzam's roll call, please?
Consideration and action to accept a gift of five American Girl Dolls from Dr. Jerry Robinson at an estimated value of five hundred and fifty dollars. Mister Jimenez? Mister Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mister Wilson?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative with three absent, the motion carries.
Six in the affirmative, the motion carries. Uh before jumping into a roll call for the next item, I will turn it over to Monica and Dr. Beta to explain this next item.
Thank you. Um pardon, um. Uh sorry, Ms. Garcia and Dr. Beta, is it okay if I just ask a quick question before we move on to the next item?
Sure, go ahead, Ms. Santiago.
Thank you. I was wondering, Monica, or Dr. Beta, if you could share a little bit um about the funding um these items that we voted on. So there's the second one, I believe. Um noting that we got some some money from federal grants. Um I'm just wondering, you know, not a typical question, but I thought it would be good just for our own informational purposes to get an understanding of where exactly that money was coming from. Is that coming from, you know, when you say a federal grant, is that coming um you know, from a a typical source of funding for our schools outside of state funding? Um is it coming from a specific committee? I was just really interested in wondering if Monica could tell us a little bit. Nothing super detailed, but just general question, I guess.
Yeah, those are, thank you, uh my myself for your questions. I am going to just do a brief overview of this part, and then I'll have Monica share everything so she can answer that question as part of this as well. Is that and and that way you have everything and I think it is important so everyone knows where where the funding has is coming from. Um so I am excited to share this next piece because I don't know, and several months ago in May, we passed a level funded budget. And I said I would have to come back to you and I'm we weren't sure where we stood uh with our level funded budget and it was at the time it it we were, we used the most uh fiscally responsible thing we could do and level fund and we did not lay off any teachers. There was no, every we kept everything stable and I am so glad we did because we got, we were level funded. And not only, we were level funded and it looks like we have, we do have an increase in our chapter seventy dollars of almost of three million. Um but I I want to explain the three million of three point eight million. We had an increase the year before of a hundred and seventy-three students in our enrollment. When they had, when we received the Student Opportunity Act funds, we had received that increased enrollment adjustment in the Student Opportunity Act funds that whole amount and we were actually petitioning to DESI saying um that's not correct because that should be in our basic chapter seventy-dollar w- funding. And so when the pandemic hit, no, we didn't receive student opportunity funds and they recalculated chapter seventy, we actually got what we were supposed to get with the extra enrollment of our students. And that's why when we have, we've been level funded and it looks like w- we have more, it's because we got the right amount that we were supposed to have in the first place. So I just want to say that because that was something that we, when we, when Student Opportunity Act had rolled out, we had flagged and said, wait a second. They included the increased enrollment and the Student Opportunity Act money, which that should not have been the case. So I'm gonna let Monica go into more detail into this, into this, the budget that we are creating right now that will some that we are submitting tonight. It's really, we're 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 bringing, we're we're bringing everything back. We made cuts and adjustments and we brought everything back. So I'm gonna let Monica walk us through everything. So Monica, I'm turning it over to you. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen and let you share yours.
I will share my screen. Okay. Um before getting into the new item relating to the general fund, to answer the school committee members' question about the federal grants money. Um of the federal grants that you approved tonight, the um by numbers, the there were multiple that we have seen um multiple times in the past. Uh typically, the federal government will allocate the funds to the state and then we receive the federal funding through DESI. The two unique ones that were specifically um CARES Act related, COVID-related were the technology grant of two hundred and twenty thousand that you accepted and the reopening grant. Those are one-time monies. Um but in general, our our overall budget on the order of about ten percent of our revenues come in through grant funds. But we're here right now for this item to talk about the general fund and the positive news, as the superintendent said. Um so real quick, couple of slides for you all. Um we'll go over for briefly what had been approved by the school committee under the level funded scenario and the and the hard choices that you had to make. Um look at the new revenues picture as we are seeing it and the proposed expenditures with those new revenues. So um with the level funding or zero percent scenario, we assumed no increase in chapter seventy, no increase in funding from the city of Chelsea, and no increase in charter school reimbursement, and a minor increase in charter school expenses. Um this table was from our slide presentation in the spring and the net um new revenue was negative a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. But as we've talked about, in the past, expenditures always increase. So a loss in revenue coupled with the increased expenditure put us in a pretty substantial deficit situation. Um specifically, two point two million dollar deficit that we had to close um in May. Um as indicated, every effort was to protect positions or was only one position that was affected out of the superintendent's office. Um but we reduced other things such as um we didn't increase our special ed tuition, although the costs arise every year. We didn't add to, we reduced extraordinary maintenance, electricity, transportation, IT, um a few things that you see there on the screen and moved a few positions at the Early Learning Center on to the uh revenue source, a modest revenue source they have there. So the revenue update is that um with the increased enrollment, there was not changes, as we understand, to the formula that the state applied. So the cha- the indeed increased revenues were strictly because there's more children in Chelsea that were um to be educated in the in the school year that we're in. So um when the chapter seventy goes up, the city obligation goes up as well because it's a state formula they have. Um we saw a tiny increase in charter school revenue, um but an offsetting increase in charter school tuition. And um because we understand that the that the city is in a substantial like difficult financial situation and they have supported Chelsea, um we've basically reduced their funding above the minimum by the amount that was obligated under the revised state numbers. So our increase we're looking at in state funding and we're holding the city harmless, we're not asking them for any additional money. But nevertheless, there's three point, nearly three point seven million dollars to deploy um now that we did not have a concept would be available to us um when we were having this conversation in the spring. So our recommendation um for the updates, um a number of these will be familiar when we talked about the Student Opportunity Act. Um and then we're also hoping to replenish some of those cuts that we took, difficult cuts in the spring. So just to work the way down from the screen, um adding a recruitment specialist to help um with the work that we are doing to diversify the workforce and to onboard our new teachers and staff at all levels. Um restore funds to information technology that we had cut. Our costs in that area, if you can imagine, are um grow- growing um because everybody is so dependent on devices. Um adding to computer technicians, which had been a goal for us in the Student Opportunity Act. And now that we've added all of the children working from home, we're adding devices for the kindergartners and the pre-kindergartners that didn't have any. Um previously, we really do need those additional support there. Uh replenishing the extraordinary maintenance that was cut. Um adding funding for tutors. Tutors are great in this environment because they can work one-on-one with the children after they've been, you know, in a group setting on Zoom, they can still work one-on-one with a tutor. Um professional development for our staff um to um actually fund the anticipated increase in special ed tuition. Take those um positions off of the revenue to reserve that revenue for other um types of activities. And exciting, add nine teacher positions, um one per school except for the Chelsea Opportunity Academy. In a way, it's a down payment on our vision for the Student Opportunity Act where we were adding positions in each school. Um continue some positions that were previously on the Puerto Rico Hurricane Grant that did not get continued this year. They're um playing an important role at the Brown Middle School and at the high school. And then the largest um figure at the bottom is um health benefits for the new physicians, replenish the salary contingency, and anticipated cost of living increases. So that is our proposal for you all to consider.
Thank you, Ms. Limboi, for sharing. Are there follow-up questions for um Monica? Ms. Santiago, does this answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I was gonna say um thank you for for naming it. I I know that I'm extremely pleased with the advocacy that went into the CARES Act and um just because there's so many different pieces within the budget and in different ways to fund our schools to the maximum, you know, ability, um you know, through the state and also through the federal level. It's just really good to see that come through in that way. And yes, that um thinking about level funding and then seeing some some pluses as opposed to deficit is always a good breather. Um so really grateful to see that and thank you for presenting it in a way that's also like really digestible in some ways. Um yeah, and just and just and just want to shout out, you know, that our, I I am particularly uh really grateful to our Senator Sal D. Dominico who, you know, we've been in conversations with throughout the last few months. That's, you know, always continuing to be a good advocate when it comes, a very strong advocate in our state when it comes to education and for the kids in our school, I'll say. Um and so just really pleased to see that we have what we have right now. Um yeah, it it just gives me, I know there's still some work to do. I continue to frown when I see that, you know, we don't have, we still have to figure out how we're gonna get some reimbursement for the charter school money. That's always like year after year after year after year. It seems to be a, you know, repetitive concern, but I think that's opportunity for advocacy, you know, at the state level to continue, you know, at least on our part, um what we can do to advocate to 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 continue um to see the budget in a strong way. Thank you. Thank you for your information today.
Any other questions from the school committee? Alrighty. Thank you, Ms. Limboi. Moving right along, if Dr. Beta can pull up our agenda again, it would be wonderful. Okay. Great. So consideration and action to accept the recommendation of the school superintendent and amend the general fund for twenty twenty-one. Sorry, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school budget to increase funding from ninety-six million five hundred thirteen thousand three hundred and seven dollars to a hundred million three, three hundred and ten thousand four hundred and thirty-six. Lots of numbers, bear with me. Explanation, on May fourteenth, the school committee adopted the F-FY twenty twenty-one budget. At the time, due to the pandemic, the district did not have the final revenue figures from the state. As a result, the superintendent recommended that the school committee adopt a level funded budget, assuming that the state would provide no new revenues to the district beyond what was available in FY twenty twenty. Since then, the state has published what appears to be the final revenue figures for the year, and Chelsea Public Schools has received nearly three point eight million dollars in additional funding as a result of enrollment increases after charter school tuition is taken into account. Upon approval of the school committee, the revised FY twenty twenty-one budget will be sent to the city council for review and approval. Miss Hayzam, may we have a roll call, please?
Consideration and action to accept the recommendation of the school superintendent and amend the general fund for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school budget to increase funding from ninety-six million five hundred and thirteen thousand three hundred and seven dollars to a hundred million three hundred and ten thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars. Mister Jimenez?
Five point six miles.
Yes.
Ms. Garcia? I'm I'm sorry, Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mister Wilson?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative with three absent, the motion carries.
Excuse me, I'm here, Ana Hernandez.
Okay, I can do the roll call again.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mister Wilson?
Yes.
Seven votes in the affirmative with two absent, the motion carries.
Seven in the affirmative motion carries. Next, we have consideration and action to approve a home homeschooling petition for a Chelsea family. Explanation, the Curriculum and Instructions Subcommittee has reviewed the proposals and has determined that the petition has met the requirements of the Chelsea Public Schools home schooling policy. All homeschooling proposals must be approved by the school committee. Miss Hayzam, may we have a roll call, please?
Consideration and action to accept a homeschooling petition for a Chelsea family. Mister Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Ms. Hernandez?
Yeah.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mister Wilson?
Yes.
Seven votes in the affirmative with two absent, the motion carries.
Seven in the affirmative motion carries. Next up, we have consideration and action to accept the resolution proclaiming the celebration of National Hispanic Heritage Month in Chelsea Public Schools. Just found in enclosure and explanation, the Chelsea School Committee hereby encourages all students and faculty, administrators, parents, and guardians to remember and celebrate the contributions that Hispanic and Latino, Latina, Latina ex, Latinx community members have made to the United States. In just a moment, I will read the resolution. Thank you, Dr. Beta. Alrighty, so in front of you, we have the resolution, which I will begin to read. Resolution proclaiming the celebration of National Hispanic Heritage Month in Chelsea Public Schools. Introduction, every year from September fifth through October fifteenth, we celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month. The observance of National Hispanic Heritage Month first began under President Lyndon Baines Johnson in nineteen sixty-eight. The observance of National Hispanic Heritage Month first began under President Lyndon Baines Johnson in nineteen sixty-eight, when it was known as Hispanic Heritage Week. The week was expanded by President Ronald W. Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight to cover the current thirty-day period. During this time, may we take the time to celebrate the history, cultures, language and contributions of Hispanics and Latinx people in our city and this country. This is an opportunity for us to demonstrate our commitment to diversity, inclusion and equity to our students, staff and families. Additionally, additionally, it is important to affirm the culture of our students. Whereas our beautiful city of Chelsea has a rich history of Hispanic and Latinx people making profound contributions in our community. Whereas, whereas Chelsea Public Schools is a, is proud to serve nearly six thousand two hundred students with eighty-eight percent who identify as Hispanic or Latino, Latina, Latinx. Whereas, America celebrates the culture and traditions of those who trace their roots to Spain, Mexico, and the Spanish-speaking nations of Central America, South America and the Caribbean. Whereas, Latinx Heritage Month celebrates the history and culture of the nation's Hispanic, Latin, Latino, Latin, Latinx community members and acknowledges their influence on politics, the economy and the social and cultural life throughout the United States. Whereas, understanding Hispanic and Latino, Latina, Latina, sorry, history is an important part of celebrating Hispanic, Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas, Hispanic Heritage Month is a time when Hispanic and Latinx members honor their spirit of self-determination, dignity and respect for cultural heritage. Whereas, those persons who come from Latin American countries have long added a special quality and enrichment to the cultural heritage and institutions of the United States, the state of Massachusetts, the city of Chelsea and the Chelsea Public School District. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Chelsea School Committee hereby promote September fifteenth through October fifteenth as a Hispanic Heritage Month.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Jimenez?
Don't wanna be a stickler, can I just propose an amendment from the state of Massachusetts to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
Do I have a, a second?
Second emotion.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Jimenez, for that small edit. Are there any other members that would like to make a comment or feedback or ideas for this resolution before moving on?
Excuse me?
Go ahead.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, my phone actually froze when Roberto gave his edit, so I didn't hear it. Could he, could it be just repeated for me?
Sure, Ms. Jimenez, do you mind repeating?
Yeah, just wanted to change state of Massachusetts to Commonwealth of Massachusetts, just to use the official.
Okay, no, that's perfect. I just, I didn't hear it. I just wanted to see what you had said. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks so much. Alrighty, um, Dr. Beta, just as a clarifying point, do we do a roll call? On, I'm forgetting, do we do a roll call on, on this or is it brought to the next one with the amended version?
Um, Madam Chair, this is Marisol.
Go ahead, Ms. Santiago.
Not to interrupt Dr. Beta either, I'll, I'll pause, but I'm pretty sure that it's, that my understanding through our, our recent trainings is that if there is no, if it is a minor edit according to, you know, our attorney Rebecca there, that we, if we vote on it, we would vote on it with the amendment included that instead of saying state of Massachusetts, it would be Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And then when it gets filed, it gets filed as that. The only thing would be when there's, you know, unless someone has another motion or there's any other discussion about the resolution, we would have to pause, but it sounds like if there is agreement and you wanna, we wanna roll call with that amended edit, we could, was my understanding.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Santiago. There's so many intricate details in this process. I wanna make sure we get it right. Alrighty, so why don't we turn it to Ms. Sehas for a roll call with the amendment?
Consideration and action to approve the amended resolution proclaiming the celebration of National Hispanic Heritage Month in Chelsea Public Schools. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Henriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Seven votes in the affirmative with two absent the motion carries.
Seven votes in the affirmative motion carries. Alrighty, well, that concludes our new business. And we are moving on to communications. Any members?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Santiago.
Yeah, I have a question too.
Alrighty, Ms. Santiago, go ahead and then followed by Ms. Carlisle.
I'll, I'll, I'll pause and go after Ms. Carlisle, that's fine.
Go ahead, Ms. Carlisle.
Okay, first of all, I would like the superintendent to send a letter to all the principals who work their tails off to get everything back into the classrooms as far as the information. We need to get these kids back into the classroom, first of all. But I want a letter to be sent to the principals from the Chelsea School Committee, tell them how much we appreciate all the hard work they did over the summer. Because they worked continuously during this virus. And then I have a question for the superintendent. I have a question. When do you think the children and the teachers will get back into the classroom and how long do you think this is gonna last? I know it's a hard question, but parents wanna know because they want their children back into the classroom. So if you can answer me a little bit about what's going on, thank you.
Thank you, Member Carlisle. The first question, yeah, yes, we will get a letter on behalf of the school committee to our principals. I'm glad we, and thank you so much for your support because our principals have been working extremely hard and you know, research says that a good principal can, is, is a key lenspin to success in a school. So I, I'll make sure that goes out and thank you. The second question that you asked is, when are we gonna go back and when are the kids gonna come back to in-person learning? I wish we could come back tomorrow. Unfortunately, we are monitoring the virus. I, I, I look at the weekly reports. We were at a two point seven five percent positivity rate, which is a huge improvement. And if we continue to go down, then we'll definitely start having discussions at our level about in-person learning. So we're waiting for that to go down. We're waiting to get out of the red zone before we can ha, and have those conversations. And then I will go back to the negotiating table and work on in-person learning negotiations. So right now, to, to answer your question, we're monitoring the data and watching the virus and, and hopefully we keep going down. Everybody wears their masks and washes their hands and practices social distancing. And maybe we can get back to school sooner than we think. So that's where we're at.
I hope so, because the parents want their children in the classroom environment as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Quick follow-up to that, just wanna, if I may, Ms. Garcia?
Go ahead, Ms. Jimenez.
Wanna point out, you know, Massachusetts is currently has the second highest spread rate in the country. So I think, you know, we all want our students back in the classroom as soon as possible. We have to do it and no matter that is, you know, safe and that will not put our staff and our kids at risk, so.
Ms. Garcia, may I go now?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So this is regards to the resolution for Hispanic Heritage Month. I just wanted to thank everybody for bringing this forward and, and that I feel a lot of pride in being able to pass this as a body tonight, especially that we have our first Latina superintendent. And, you know, that brings us a lot of joy and a lot of pride. So I'm, I'm particularly really proud about it. And, you know, I don't think it was necessarily an amendment for the resolution, but, you know, we are just gonna bring it back that, you know, in the midst of the, you know, the, the climate that we've been in this year and the difficulties around Black Lives Matter and all the work that the city is doing to really keep up with, you know, diversity, diversity and inclusion in all levels. For the folks that have been the most marginalized, I can't, as a Puerto Rican woman, cannot deny my own indigenous and the black contribution to our country and the heritage that that makes a lot of Latinx folks. And, you know, even though we wanna honor Hispanic, you know, Latinx specifically, I think it's important to acknowledge, you know, that we are a country that's, you know, pretty much, at least from a Puerto Rican perspective. It just feels important for us that while we're, we're saying this tonight, that I'm just really proud to tell the community, right, that like we're all committed to continuing that, that commitment where it comes to speaking up for the most marginalized and making sure that we're doing better when it comes to diversity and inclusion, you know, in our schools and across the districts. Just feels really important. And then the second thing is that, you know, I'm also extremely, extremely proud of this team that we were able to pass Indigenous Peoples' Day, which for the first time this year, it's on our calendar, October twelfth. That is significantly something that symbolizes a great deal to a lot of people. And so, you know, when we meet next month, you know, we'll have, have had celebrated our first Indigenous Peoples' Day. Yeah, and again with, I have a, a lot of loved folks across the country in certain places of the world that are of indigenous peoples. And I'm just really grateful that we were able to do that together as a body. So I, I feel like it's a double, a double win for us tonight, but the work continues and our commitment, you know, continues, so. Thank you, Madam Chair, for having brought that forward for us to actually make that possible and everybody that voted for it. Just really, really happy about it.
Thank you, Ms. Santiago. I'd just like to echo your words, as a Puerto Rican myself and as a proud Latina, it's my job and I'll speak from the eye to be an ally to all of our students and those who are voiceless and and those who are fearful of standing up and speaking up. And so I take great, great pride and joy in working with our Latina superintendent that I've enjoyed so much working with you and learning an incredibly large amount from you. And so I thank you for leading our district during these difficult times and your cabinet members, of course. And with that, we will move on to announcements. Do we have any announcements?
At this time, we have no communications at this time.
The census deadline has been extended to, I believe, October thirty-first or thirtieth. Think it's news as of today because Trump administration decided that they wanted to shorten it to October fifth, but the judge, the court said, nope. So it's now until the end of October. So please, if you have not completed your census, please do so. Ask your neighbor to do it, ask your family, anybody and everybody. It is super important to make sure that we are counted, to make sure that we have the, the resources that are coming to us from, you know, federal government, state government. It, it all flows from the number of people that have been counted in the city. So it is really, really important. Please do your census. Yeah, thank you.
Also, please make sure that you are registered to vote in November third, which is almost a little over forty days. And also, I wanna also give a salute to all the principals because it is Principal's Month. So we wanna acknowledge all the principals, all the educators and especially all the administration employees at the central office. Thank you all for a great job. Thank you all for a great year, including you. Christine Lee, Human Resources, we always miss you, but we still wanna let you know that we appreciate everything you've done and are doing for our students and for our schools. Thank you all.
Follow up on my announcement, sorry. Just wanna say thank you to Dr. Abada for helping us with, with the census. We, the district pushed out an assignment to all students so that they would be asked to complete the census. You know, as, as within the, the system online, so I'm really grateful for that, so that the district can do, you know, its part in helping us reach as many people as possible. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez and Mr. Wilson for your announcements. Mr. Wilson, go ahead. I see your finger.
I just forgot. Just got a late notice about an event coming up with the Chelsea Youth Alliance. They have an event Saturday morning. Don't know exactly what time, but they're putting the flyer together right now. And there's gonna be like a community march or celebration, I guess, going at City Hall. I wanna say it's twelve o'clock at City Hall, but I'm, because working it right now, so stay tuned for the flyer to come out soon, today or tomorrow. So I hope everybody can be at City Hall for this event. Thank you. That's it for my, my announcements for today.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And yes, I actually just received that flyer. It's this Saturday. We can post the flyer on our, on our pages. So thank you, thank you for that, Mr. Wilson. Any other announcements? Sorry for the background. Yeah, alrighty. So I have a motion to adjourn this meeting at eight twelve.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alrighty, meeting adjourned. Goodbye, stay safe and happy Thursday.
Thank you guys. See you guys soon.